I'd like to call to order the October 22, 2019, regular meeting of the Rutland City Board of School Commissioners. If you'd all please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so if the secretary would presume that all commissioners are in attendance with the exception of Commissioners Seward, Johnston, Hensick, and Blow. Joanne May is actually coming momentarily. All right, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve that agenda? Any changes to it? Actually, I don't need a motion if there are no changes. Is everyone okay? No alterations to the agenda? All right. So, moving on, we're gonna be doing something new tonight, so bear with me. And in an effort to make more productive use of our meeting times and as we restructure things and spend more time really focusing and talking about the things that we really should be, we're going to adopt what's called a consent agenda. And actually, I'm gonna take more time explaining it than it's actually gonna take to do it. But this is new, I think, for a lot of us. And we talked about this at the retreat, which we're gonna spend time on a little bit later, but consent agenda is a board meeting practice that groups routine business and reports into one agenda item. The consent agenda can be approved in one action rather than filing motions on each item separately. So it's a common tool used, and there are several things and the consent agenda is decided upon by the Chair under Robert's rules. But there are certain things that we do that are of routine nature that would not require us to tackle individually and make motions individually. Things such as the meeting minutes, there may be like an executive report or something that might be filed in writing, any other types of reports that may be in writing that we would decide would get put on the consent agenda. Now, the consent agenda, if a member disagrees with an item being on the consent agenda, then that member can ask to be recognized and ask that that item be removed from the consent agenda and acted on separately. So that, and I'm reading, this is new to me, too. So you'll have to bear with me as I'm kinda getting my bearings around this thing. So if, for example, there was something that was placed under the consent agenda that a board member felt should really be discussed separately, then that can be done. You just ask for that. So this is not to in any way circumvent important discussion or necessary discussion. It's not meant to do that. It should never be used for that purpose. It's really used for purposes of efficiency where routine matters are generally undertaken. So, what we have for this one is we have a consent agenda that has three items, and all of these are in your board packet. Now, one of the things that we're gonna wanna be looking at doing is, and that's really for Hurley and I, is getting our board packets out a little bit earlier. That's incumbent on us, getting together earlier and helping that happen. But really, the intent is for the board members to have studied the packet, to have read the materials in the packet, and to come prepared for meetings. And actually, we're gonna be speaking about that a little bit later. So that when one of these items comes up, you're not saying, "Hey, I haven't seen this. I haven't looked at it." This is the first time we're doing this. So what I'd like to do is try it out, and if this works, then we will attempt to use it. And I've spent far too much time explaining it because I'm actually, you know, doing just the opposite of what it's intended to do, which is efficient time management. But I did wanna explain it. So is there any questions about the purpose of it? Okay, then. So the way it would work is a motion, so the minutes, the Personnel Memorandum Number 602 and the first reading of the Series 8,000 Policy Committee, which came out of Aaron Schiff's committee. So the way we would work is there would be a motion forthcoming from a member to approve the consent agenda, and then there would be a second. We'd vote on the consent agenda. If there were any objections to any item, that just needs to be vocalized at that point in time, and we'll remove that item, have that voted on separately. Is that?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Who have a second? All right. Any discussion?
Well, I just wondered, just an operations question. So if there is something in there that is, like, just in these reading the policies, if you just wanted to point out little minor things, like there was a typographic error that just needs to be fixed, how does that get handled?
I, from my reading on something like that, Matt, that would just get noted. But because that's not material to the motion, so if, for something like, now, the other item would be, for example, if you just felt that a particular policy was, "We need to redo this policy. I don't agree with this policy," then that could be, that specific policy could be taken out of the consent agenda.
This would be more minor.
I mean, I'm not a parliamentarian by any stretch of the imagination, but that's my reading of it.
This would be more minor things, like, so like in reading through the policies and how they're written, if you see things that are like, "Oh, just a typo." Can that be shared off the record so that it just can be corrected before it goes into the?
I believe so. If there's not a material change to the meaning of the policy, if it's simply that "two" should be a whatever, or, yeah, if it's minor, if it's just that. But if you materially, a word materially changes the intent, then I would say that needs to come out. All right. So we all okay with this? All right. So then we have a motion. We have a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Done. All right. Phew!
Next one will be quicker.
Got that one done. Okay. The next item on the agenda is communication. We have one written communication for the board.
Dear Rutland City Public School Board of Members, your support and assistance in planning and executing homecoming events for 2019 is greatly appreciated. Thank you for the incredible community event on behalf of the Rutland High School students and family. Janice Nichols, Athletics and Activities.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Now, we have an opportunity for any members of the public to address the board and items not on the agenda. We have a two-minute time limit on this, however, so I would just ask that, and I'll have the clerk time that. We have a lot on the agenda this evening, quite a bit accomplished in particular on Number 7. So, all right, if you wanna introduce yourself, then?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Kowetsky from Robert's Avenue on Rutland, and this is my friend Marilyn. I think you all received this in electronic form, so I would like to distribute it tonight. I understand, and I would ask that I be placed on the agenda, we be placed on the agenda of the next meeting, and allow 15 minutes for us to present then. And anyway, so I'll just distribute this tonight. Is there people missing tonight?
Yes.
Could you tell us who's missing?
She could get it to them.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the school program updates, student representatives.
The Vermont Symphony Orchestra String Trio Fiddlesticks visited Northwest and Northeast students recently, introducing children to the most important members of the Symphony Orchestra in a fun and engaging manner. Second graders will conclude their fall greenhouse experience this week, learning about pollination, planting, and harvesting. And kindergartners are learning about their community and recently visited the Rutland City Fire Station. Northwest has a Hero Assembly this Friday where students will be recognized for displaying characteristics related to honesty and integrity. From RIS, we are forging ahead at RIS and having a fantastic start to the school year. RIS was just recognized for our development of PBIS by the AOE. Additionally, we had the great fortune of having four RHS students participate in our recent Character Trait Recognition Assembly for all our students. Students were celebrated for demonstrating teamwork and cooperation and were presented with certificates by our exemplary high school student athletes. RIS was also selected as one of 10 schools to participate in restorative practices, learning cohort, along with Northwest Primary. Students are currently focused on the character trait of integrity for the month of October. And from Stafford, the past two weeks have illustrated the wonderful community partnerships that our programs have established throughout the region. Our programs have hosted guest speakers and demonstrations from Vermont Fish and Wildlife, a local windshield repair company, a pipe fitter, and Paul Mitchell Salon educators. Teachers from other career and tech centers from around the state have visited our instructors and co-taught lessons. On October 30th, our entire school will be heading out to rake leaves for many of our community members and at our community parks. Each individual that has their lawn raked will also receive a freshly baked apple pie curated by our culinary arts students. Any board members are welcome to join us. Finally, on Thursday, October 31st, we will have our first Student of the Marking Period Assembly. During the assembly, Sarah Cosgrove from Rutland Regional Medical Center will be presenting to students about the dangers associated with vaping. That's it.
Hannah? For Rutland High School, from the past Sunday to Wednesday, NEASC has been visiting RHS to assess the school's self-study and give a report back. Last Thursday, RHS held a Senior Stress Day that allowed teachers and counselors to help the senior students with their college applications. RHS wants to congratulate Matt Creed and Emma Duffy for winning Pumpkin King and Queen. Also, congratulations to Luke McGee and Matt Rock on being accepted to the International Thespian Society.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. We will move on, then, to staff celebrations. And I believe that we have two teachers this evening that are going to be honored as UVM Outstanding Teachers of the Year, so I will ask whoever's gonna do those honors. Can't see the audience, they're all in the dark there. Anyway.
I'm just checking if our teacher is here. It's my pleasure to introduce Karen Holbrook as the Rutland Intermediate School exemplary teacher of the year. If you don't know Karen, Karen's been the consummate professional educator at Rutland Intermediate School for nearly two decades. She's a student-centered teacher and is motivated by her students and their desire to learn. Karen's classroom has a focus on learning, and there is no wasted time when students are in the room. I can tell you from personal experience that Karen is a fun-loving, humorous teacher who is incredible to watch whether she's instructing students in the art of character analysis, empathy, or even coaxing a student out of a locker when he's having a rough day. Karen's held in high regard by the student, staff, and parents at Rutland Intermediate School, and it should come as no surprise that the teacher leadership chose Karen as our outstanding teacher.
Congratulations.
Am I on? Thank you very much. I really appreciate all the kind words. I've had lots of kind words from many different people this week, and I really do appreciate it. And so Andy said I would have a few seconds to speak, and so I thought, okay, what can I say that would be just one of those things, you know, a drop-dead moment? I couldn't think of one. So anyway, I was in the copy room today, and there's a quote that's in the copy room. It's not my quote, but I look at that quote every day, and it really does, in my opinion, kinda sum up how I've taught over many, many years. So the quote is, "Students may forget what you said, but they will never forget how you made them feel." And so if I had to sum up my teaching career and say, "What did I focus on?", it was those connections with kids, because I feel that they're so important. And in between those connections, hopefully, they're learning a little bit about plural nouns. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Karen. And I will ask our new middle school principal to come forward and?
Everyone?
Hello?
I am proud to introduce you to Marissa Aston. I don't know where to go. Sorry. Marissa Aston, who is our UVM Teacher of the Year. And I am gonna go ahead and read what someone so wonderfully wrote about Marissa, kind of from the script. I apologize, but new to this, I figured. It's so good, I have to read it. So, originally from Brandon, Vermont, Marissa ventured to Utah where she graduated from Westminster College of Salt Lake City, majoring in English with a minor in French. She went on to earn a master's at Westminster, and her pursuit of learning and adventurous spirit brought her from Vermont to Utah to France, and then ultimately back to Rutland County, where she has settled with her husband and three children and teaches at Rutland Middle School for the past 11 years. She's continued to seek educational opportunities to increase her knowledge base and inform her instruction. In 2018, she was chosen to attend the Olga Legiel Institute for Holocaust Studies and Human Rights Seminar, and has created a wonderful unit around social justice and Jewish culture, the Holocaust, and genocide, which she has taught to her students, and they've enjoyed. She's also attended a professional development experience in Williamsburg, Virginia, this past summer, and we look forward to the unit that she will create from that learning. Marissa, I'm trying to abbreviate a little bit. Marissa is a mentor to new teachers. She's a collaborating teacher for intern teachers and provides support and learning opportunities for those current and future educators. She's our wellness coordinator. She is our building rep for the local standards board. She is our union representative. She is currently an English teacher, and she's teaching French and supporting ELA learners in reading intervention. There's nothing this woman can't do. I love it. So I do wanna just read this one paragraph. So Ms. Aston models expectations of excellence in her classroom and within the school community. When you enter her classroom, evidence of student learning abounds. Her organization, experience, and knowledge led to differentiated and meaningful learning for students. She uses incentives creatively to engage students. One of the more memorable incentives she initiated this year was how she challenged her students to read outside of school. Marissa actually cut her long hair based on what students read. On the day of the haircutting, 7th grade had an assembly to celebrate their reading accomplishment and the lopping off of 12 inches of Marissa's hair. The enthusiasm in the building was contagious. So for that and many other reasons, Marissa is our UVM Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Marissa. How do you, like, read my whole biography? So thank you.
Congratulations, Karen and Marissa. Well deserved. All right. We are moving on to the meet of our school program updates, which is the pre-K through 2 school and the Rutland Intermediate School Improvement Plans, which are seasonal. And we're gonna ask our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Bliss, to introduce, and we will then ask the presentation of the plans.
All right. Thank you so much. As you know, just as Mr. Kersell said, we are talking about our continuous improvement planning and work in our schools, and tonight we're gonna hear from Suzanne Ingles and Lauren Pep, who are primary school principals. And then we'll get to hear after them from Andrew Skarzinski, who is the principal of Rutland Intermediate School. The format you'll get tonight is we get a brief overview of what they've done in the last year or two and a little reflection on that, just some highlights. And then a look forward as what they're planning to work on accomplishing for this year and next in the Plan Do Study Act format. When Mr. Skarzinski comes up, I do have the rest of that piece. It's my fault it didn't get in your packet. And I will give it to you now, because I know you'll be rifling through it, so interested in what he'll be showing you. But I'll turn it over to Ms. Ingles and Ms. Pep first.
Hi, everybody. So Lauren and I work very closely on lots of things. We, since we both have the primary buildings, and we do many, many things, so it only makes sense that we have worked on our plans together. So tonight, we are going to present two goals. We typically have picked two major goal areas over the past few years. A goal around behavior, emotions, climate, and a goal around academics. I'll present one of them, and Lauren will present the other. And we'll start off with how we did on our previous year's goals and then move on to what we're doing this year and for our future. So as far as this past year, one of the goals that we worked on was related to social, emotional, behavioral skills and coming up with some proficiencies and assessments and interventions around that. And how we did on that, I would say we partially achieved our goal. Not totally, but we partially achieved our goals around that. We came up with a series of proficiencies, and those were target areas and skills that we want to be teaching related to emotions, behaviors, social. And we used the resiliency curriculum that all of the school buildings are using, so it made sense to be pulling right from that common curriculum. And then, as far as coming up with assessments around that, that's where there were a little bit more difficulties because assessments of social, emotional, behavioral skills are, there's inconsistencies, and there's subjectiveness involved with how do you measure those things. So there's a bit more work around that. We do have some common screeners that are being used, but they are just screeners. But we're working on coming up with more common definitions of different data points, such as referrals and attendance and other incidences. So that's an area that we are continuing to work on, the assessment of that. And then we are, we have gathered and started doing many different interventions around improving our emotions, behavior, and social skills. So now Lauren will talk about where we did work academically.
I was going to highlight one of our goals also. Okay. So one of the goals that we have had to do with increasing professional learning and instructional practices in the area of social, emotional learning for students. We felt that we really increased our learning and our practices in these areas in many ways, so I'll just share some of those with you. We had a revitalization and renewal of our positive behavior intervention and supports, otherwise known as PBIS, with staff attending trainings over the summer and really working together to build upon what we already had in place. We have developed some more trauma-informed practices at the school, such as cooldown spaces in all of our classrooms. What that may look like is a cozy corner in the classroom for children to voluntarily access if they're feeling agitated or upset. We are using common language in regard to emotions, using something called Zones of Regulation, so children can identify how they're feeling. "Gosh, I'm really feeling in the red zone, which means I'm kind of angry." Or "I'm green, which means I'm feeling good and I'm ready to go." We have visual schedules in all of our classrooms so that children know what's happening first, second, and third throughout the day. That's known to help decrease anxiety in our children, and in all of us. Our planning room has transformed into something we call a Starship Room, which is a calming room set up to allow for sensory regulation and for cooldown of children. And we're exploring restorative practices and implementing things such as community-building circles. It's all about relationship building and getting to know our children better. So as far as our next steps, we are certainly continuing to build upon relationships with children to give them a sense of belonging and security and a willingness to take risks via our restorative and trauma professional learning communities and also through the restorative grant that Haley mentioned we received through the AOE. We'll be getting a coach into the school to help us with that a little bit, building relationships. Identify students' needs earlier and give them what they need sooner, and build our toolbox of trauma-informed strategies. So that's what we've been working on. Shall I move into the academic part of the Plan Do Study? So as far as what we're, when we're looking ahead at what we wanna do, Suzanne talked about the social, emotional. I'm going to talk about the academics moving forward. So the question that we asked was, "Does personalized learning have a positive impact on our students' proficiency in literacy?" And we are looking at that as supported through something called the Daily Five Framework, which I'll explain, and as supported when implementing Lucy Cawkins' Units of Study in Writing. Last spring, our reading coach planned for all of our teachers in Grade 2, K to 2, to begin to implement this Daily Five Framework in their literacy instruction. We find this to be a very valuable tool for our students, or a framework for our students, one that allows for more personalization to occur. And it allows us to differentiate across our diverse community much more easily, which engages our students more. So we will continue to implement Daily Five and get better at that. Specifically, it's a framework for structuring literacy time meant to help students increase their independence, and at the same time, it allows for our teachers to provide individualized attention, both one-on-one and in small groups. Over time, we expect to see an increase in student independence. We expect to see students build stamina for reading and accountability. More opportunities for students to read at their independent levels and their instructional levels, and an increase in the time teachers spend with students, both one-on-one and in small group instruction. In the area of writing, we had a cadre of teachers from Northeast and Northwest attend a literacy conference in July that really inspired them to use Lucy Cawkins' Units of Study in Writing. They came back to school and said, "Could we do this?" And frankly, it's something that I've been wanting to do for a long time. So as a result, we do plan to adopt the Lucy Cawkins' Units of Study in Writing for Grades K to 2. Each unit will provide teachers with mini lessons and a format that includes personalized focus to a specific group of students who need extra support in any given area. This is a framework that's very similar to Daily Five, so it will be comfortable for the students. Sessions will begin with a mini lesson, and then children go off and work independently while teachers can confer one-on-one with children or work with them in small groups. It's actually a beautiful sight to see. So we look forward to the personalization that will occur in both of these things, the Daily Five and the Lucy Cawkins' Units of Study in Writing.
So really, our goals are very much continuing, although the year's framework has changed a little bit, the language of the plans. It really is a continuation of good work, good work around academics and around social and emotional areas. So as we are also focusing more in on specific techniques for academics, like these Daily Five and Centers and Lucy Cawkins' Writing, we're also, for our next year around the emotional and behavioral work, we're focusing in and honing in more specifically on enhancing our existing practices like PBIS and the behavioral methods that we're using. We're enhancing those good methods with more specific trauma-informed practices. So the difference between last year and this year is much more of a trauma focus, and it's looking at techniques that help both students and staff to learn to calm and regulate, to learn how to be aware of emotions and levels of stress in ourselves and to be able to regulate that. We're looking at ways that we can use relationships and connection. And I heard so loud and clear from Karen Holbrook the importance of connections, and we recognize that in our work with our students. And so we're looking at the role and value in how to make connections for our students and for our staff. And then we also, in our focus on trauma-informed practices, also provide coping and social skills. So those are some of the differences between last year and how we're enhancing and focusing more this year. Thank you.
Andy, and then we'll, just general questions for the group after.
So I think one of the, if you refer, the RIS updates are the last two pages of that packet. And one of the ways that may make the most sense for us, for me to go through this, is to go through what I received as the initial continuous improvement plan that was established in March 2018, and then talk about our next steps and kinda make that connection, that through line between the last CIP and the one we're looking at going forward. So the two primary goals that were established in March of 2018 were really focused on developing the academic and behavioral multi-tiered systems of support at RIS. And so that's otherwise known as MTSS. So Goal 1 was focused on expanding professional learning regarding to the academic component of MTSS so that they get better served in the needs of students. And examining what was done in that time period, we would recognize that it was partially achieved. And this really is evidenced through the following: professional learning instructional collaborative practices. There was the establishment of an ongoing, consistent methodology to collect and disaggregate student formative and summative assessment data. And so there is a robust data platform that the school utilizes to collect student performance and share that regularly with teachers at the building. The school was successful in creating a regular Positive Solutions Team meeting with the broad faculty involvement to review student progress. And so those meetings occurred monthly, and they were able to look at what students are placed and what supports could be put into place for students. There was an increased access to intervention classes for a wider range of students, and that was through the use of scheduling and examining who was eligible for intervention supports. supports. Next up coming out of that though, and this is where the tie-in you'll see once we get into the new CIP, is the continued focus on developing the fidelity of our tier one instruction. And so when I say the tier one instruction, I mean that's what, when we think of tiered supports, tier one is kind of the whole classroom or the universal supports. To me, the greatest leverage that, that you have in a school is that core classroom work. And so examining what's the fidelity and the consistency of that curriculum that's being taught in all content areas, especially in numeracy and literacy. Aligning the assessment calendars, tools, and practices with the intervention cycles so that we'll have a flywheel effect going on between both intervention and, and the core curriculum. And so we can really leverage that time. And then we can also have a coherent set of assessment dates with intervention cycles so that we can best meet student needs. We want to continue to examine and review the intervention model so that we can provide a greater distinction of intensity, frequency, duration, and location between tiers two and tiers three. And so when we think about tier two and tier three instruction, that's when we look at students needing, you know, supplemental, supplemental instruction. And it might be two to three days a week, or it may be five days a week. But we also want to consistently look at what's the location of those, of those supports taking place? Is it a pull-out class, or is this an extra set of hands coming in to use flexible groups and break things down for students differently? That is coupled with the idea of reviewing the intervention scheduling practices so we can increase student access. One of the things that when we look at the intervention practices, generally within any school system, we want to think about that eighty fifteen five model, or roughly thereabouts, where the core curriculum is meeting eighty percent of the needs of students at all times. One of the challenges that RIS has faced is that some of the benchmarks we've set would move many, many more students than fifteen to twenty percent of students into intervention supports. And so we want to look at, again, going back to that tier one level of instruction, because we haven't been able to serve that large number of students that aren't hitting our targets. And so we want to look at what's that curriculum going on, at the same time looking at how are we scheduling them in to, to service as many students as possible. We want to continue to examine multiple opportunities for learning, different learning pathways for students. And so we provide students with a variety of ways to demonstrate their understanding and success in a topic and establishing a consistent set of instructional tools for intervention teachers that are aligned with the literacy and numeracy curriculum. And this is again where that flywheel effect comes into place, where for reinforcing pre-teaching the work going on in intervention in the classroom, we're, we're hoping to gain greater than a year's worth of growth for our students. The second side of the MTSS supports is really focused on the behavioral component. Again, this was one thing that I would look at as being partially achieved. And examining what was done in the course of the last year and a half, there has been a renewal of the PBIS or Positive Behavior Intervention Supports at RIS and the framework. There's been an establishment of school-wide committee, community block with a corresponding emphasis on building relationships among and between students and all staff. The school has implemented a school-wide resiliency curriculum. There's been the development of teacher knowledge and capacity regarding trauma-informed instruction through professional development. We've reinvigorated the responsive classroom practices so that we've added and clarified our in-class take-a-break space, our partnership spaces, so that students can quickly reengage in their classwork. And we've established consistent structures for student, student, the student morning piece. And one of the challenges that came into place is that slowing the day down and creating a, a universal structure for students. And so slowing that day down meant, let's deal with some of the commotion in the hallway so that students come in in a peaceful manner and they can center themselves once they enter the classroom. The school's been successful in revitalizing the, the pod classroom with a positive opportunities for development, as well as dedicating after-school meeting time to engage faculty in book, in a book study related to restorative practices. And continuing this work of restorative practices is an ongoing growth for the coming years in terms of next steps. We also want to continue to work on expanding the teacher knowledge and capacity related to trauma-informed instruction because it's so critical. I don't think that one can really know enough about trauma-informed practices. It's an area that we're going to continue to develop. You know, continuing to exam, you know, enhance teacher capacity around building purposeful relationships within their classrooms, just like Karen said earlier. That level of community, that connection with students is vitally important, especially at the intermediate level, making sure that we have that time for the purposeful development of those relationships. And continuing to review our positive solution team referral process so that it can timely address student needs. And so the next improvement plan, so those items, as I kind of looked at, you know, were not as necessarily as specific or measurable or targetable, there's a feel, there's a sense that things are calmer in the building right now. And there's a sense that, you know, students are learning, students are engaged, students have great relationships. When I can walk into a classroom and a teacher is talking about empathy and compassion and integrity and honesty with third graders, and third graders can say these things and understand what they mean, it is an incredibly powerful feeling. And so when we look at our goals for things, we want to say that there's, at our core, why we have these relationships and why we focus upon these relationships, is that because kids learn better when they feel safe. Kids learn better when they feel that they can take risks with their learning. So our first goal for, for this one is we are looking at a moderate increase in our Smarter Balance scores in, in both reading and, and numeracy. And we are targeting a five percent growth over time. Our key question around that though is, is looking at the use of formative and summative assessment. But the question is, does the use of frequent, regular formative assessment in an environment conducive to student learning provide teachers with opportunity to use that to inform and drive a targeted instruction? So around some of those essential tasks, we looked at continuing to develop our, our tier one curriculum for all students. It means embedding formative assessment tasks regularly. It looks at ensuring that coaching, coaching is available and that we're having data to give us feedback around what are some of the, the wide range of student needs and giving them a, a wide range of text that they can utilize to be able to engage with, with reading content. With the behavioral side of our, our other, our goal is that we feel like, and we, we focused, you know, an incredible amount of effort this year on building community at the building and that we're targeting a twenty percent reduction in our planning room referrals. We'd like to see an increased student attendance because there's a greater level of connected dis to school and improved student outcomes around their sense of climate, their sense of, of the building through a school climate survey. And so identifying some of those essential tasks that have to happen, continuing to look at how we're utilizing the, the community building block, participating in a restorative justice cohort or restorative approaches cohort with the AOE, and that's along with Northwest Primary. Continuing to look at how we're utilizing our teacher pairs during this community building block to engage students and finding different ways at, at tier two and three. So I feel as if we have that, that tier one is, is getting pretty solid, but looking at how are we providing greater access to students from greater, a greater level of supports, whether it's internally or through partners like Rutland. I rattled off a lot, I apologize.
Okay, there's a lot to talk about. Okay. Questions for any of the principals? Erin.
It's more observation, and I know there's so much to this, but what I noticed on Northwest and just the sort of, the update paperwork was the percentages of attendance for parent teacher conferences, and it was year after year. So information like that is really great to see because then we're looking at improvement and even the percentages of SBAK raising. But it'd be nice to sort of look at that year after year. How many years have we done this? Do we know? The continuous improvement plan? Okay, many years, right? So there's like four showed here, but it'd be nice just to see that in different aspects, looking at whatever your, your goals are, you know, but really look at the data percentages because I think it helps us to really see those numbers rise or a better idea if they aren't rising on what we can do better. But I liked that. That was it.
I, I, oh, I'm sorry, Matt. So is the, I don't want to understand the cycle better, and Rob might.
Yeah.
Is it a, so is the study, act kind of done together, like in the cycle, and then you go?
So in this, you saw, so the, the state has this new process in this continuous kind of learning cycle, Plan Do Study Act. And so right now, what you saw was they had to review back and look at their, you know, their study. Now they're in act for this coming year, and it'll just go around. And the first plan kind of, once you plan, you do study act, repeat, study act, repeat, study act, repeat. So that's where we're at.
So those are always working, those are always working at the same time?
Absolutely.
Like that's how this is going? Okay, I see.
How many years have we done this?
The.
Continuous Improvement Plan.
So we've done.
I knew we'd know the answer.
We've done action planning since I, since before I joined the district, it's been a state mandate. So since nineteen ninety-eight, but the CIP process as it stands now is three or four years.
Thank you.
So what I was wondering, like when you go through a lot of the, like a lot of your presentation focused on some of our needs to, you know, provide a safe, healthy environment, address social emotional needs. And I know, Andrew, you mentioned trying to have more opportunities for multiple learning pathways.
Yes.
For kids, which when kid, you know, when kids are more engaged in different variety of activities, have choice in some of their learning, it helps with some of the behavior pieces. Are there things that administrators in the building need or that teachers in the building need to build in more of that? Is there, are there coaches that come down and work with students in your buildings that can help teachers with innovating instruction? Do you guys have access to that?
So we have, we, we share a K six numeracy and, and literacy coach. And both Dana and Susan, who's new to the district, have been fantastic in working with us. So the, the first step for us has been just kind of clarifying and putting things into solid ground so that there's consistency from teacher to teacher. So today, our, our teachers in numeracy and literacy and ELA and math looked at what are some areas of the curriculum that we can look at compacting so we can create some space. I think one of the, one of the needs that you might hear from teachers if they were to say is, there's always a lament about time. Like there, there's never enough time. If we could teach three hundred and sixty-six days a year, we would do that. If we could teach ten hours a day, we would do that. So you'll often hear that there's not enough time. And so I think one is having that level of looking at where can we find that space and then creating the freedom and, and creating the environment. Just, so just like we would want to do with, with students, to say, we want to create this environment where you're, you're comfortable in taking risks and, and comfortable with failure, because that's the first step, step for growth. Creating an environment where teachers feel comfortable to do that and, and feeling that kind of safety that if something doesn't go right, you know, you know, then they, they can just bounce back and, and the learning is in the reflection after that. So I think in terms of coaches, I think once we have those pieces in place, I think then it's a conversation with, with our literacy or numeracy coaches of saying, how else? How else can we demonstrate learning? What else do we want to do? Where else can we take this? We have these big, we have these, we have these standards, how else can we demonstrate our learning around these, these bigger ideas?
Do you feel there's a, oh, I'm sorry, Suzanne.
I was just going to add, we also have technology provides a huge amount of professional development in our district to, to help our teachers integrate technology. We have some technology coaches at the primary level for robotics and for STEAM. And then also as far as professional development, we've had ongoing years of training around differentiation of instruction, and, and those methods definitely apply to the need that you're pointing out.
So you're, there's plenty of, you feel there's enough resources available to access as you're developing like that comfort level?
I, I've been pleasantly pleased and, and satisfied with the moderate resources that we have from both central office and within the building.
Enough is pretty subjective.
Yeah.
We've got great resources and it's in the right topics.
I'm just going to observe, I like the, the Plan Do Study Act for those that are into management. Of course, that's a Deming cycle, and it is one that is universally used in continuous improvement and is, is one that my organization uses. And one of the concepts is fail fast, which is, you know, you want to try things, if they don't work, you move on to something else. One of the things I'm going to ask for you to consider, not to answer now, because we're going to have a much deeper conversation about this in a little bit as a board, but as we look at these plans and as we look at the district, and we're going to be talking about this when we go over our board operating protocols and also re-engaging in our strategic plan that we developed a few years ago. One of the things that, that I know we're going to want to, certainly I'm going to ask, and also I think the board will at individual building levels, is that if we were all locked in a room, and I'm sure you all would like to do that, but if we were all locked in a room, couldn't get out, and you had to slip a piece of paper under the door to tell us how your school was doing, what would that paper say? What would be the key indicators? What are the things, and this is what we've struggled with, and I'm not talking the building level, so you guys monitor all sorts of things, but we as a board have not done a good job at this, and that's what we're going to talk about tonight, getting us back to that. But those big things that if we were somewhere else and you slipped it under the door that said, this is how Rutland Intermediate School is doing, this is how Northwest is doing, this is how Northeast is doing, or the primaries together, that's really, and I know from my organization's standpoint, those are the things that I demand, which is we need to know how we're doing. You all track numerous, I mean, education is a data-driven business. I think where we struggle is how we ourselves as laypeople, or most of us are, there's a couple of professional teachers on the board, but for the most of us, we're, we're laypeople when it comes to education. But we're also the community representatives, and people will ask us, how are you doing? How's Rutland City Public Schools doing? So those are the things, I think, as we move forward, because there's lots of good things going on in the school system, but just be considering that as, as we move forward. We're going to talk about that in a little bit. But I, I appreciate, there's a lot of good work that's gone into these plans. I like the continuous improvement aspect of it, and I appreciate the, you know, the work that everyone is doing to make this a, a great district. So I just want to comment and thank you for the, for the work, and we look forward to it. So thank you very much. All right. We now move on to a report that was in your board packet on enrollment analysis. So I will ask Dave to lead us through.
Thank you. I'm going to talk about the enrollment analysis kind of in general terms, and then I have five items that I'd like to talk about in the superintendent's report afterwards. So many of you got the report, you probably looked at the last page, which shows the overall enrollment K through twelve as of October, and it goes back to nineteen ninety-five. And what struck me about this is the following. When I was Commissioner of Education eighteen to twenty years ago, there were about a hundred and ten thousand students in Vermont schools, K-12. Now they're between seventy and eighty thousand. So the drop is about thirty percent, maybe a little more than thirty percent statewide. There are a lot of reasons for that. The birth rate statewide has declined, same, same in Rutland, et cetera. You all know that. But then if you look at the comparison of Rutland to the state, it tracks pretty close to the state. So at our height, we might've had twenty-eight or twenty-nine hundred, and the enrollment for the last two years has been pretty much the same, just under two thousand, and projected for next year at nineteen ninety. So what we do is a cohort analysis. It's an inexact science, but you do your best to try to, to project what the enrollment will be in the next year. So that's sort of a general look at it. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about individual schools. And I'll leave it at that, in case you have any specific questions.
Any questions of Dave on the enrollment analysis report? I know we take a look at this every year. Trending, it looks like it's relatively stable, at least the last few years, although trend is only, it has to be six points above a certain level to actually be a trend, but nevertheless, not, not to be specific. Any questions? All right.
Inexact science, we'll update it. Slight uptick for next year, but not anything to hang your hat on at this moment. So five things I wanted to mention. I think I mentioned one or two meetings ago that I was engaging all of our school staff and, and a number of parents as well. So I've completed the meetings with bus drivers, custodians, maintenance staff, all the parent educators, all the teachers, support staff in, in the schools. And it's been very interesting to hear their point of view, and it sort of guides me as we move forward. I think, so this is very simple or simplistic, which is kind of the way I think. So the goal is to make sure that we have all the right people in the right places and that the commensurate goal with that is to make sure we have all the students in the right schools and the right programs, which may include alternative programs. So we are now looking at ways in which we can serve students better, perhaps outside of the traditional school environment. And there'll be more on that coming forward. The key is to make sure that all students are learning, but we want to make sure that they're in the right, in the right place. So that has come out of that and it's been very interesting. Number two, facilities planning. I wanted to let you know, I think I might have emailed you this, but I wanted to announce that we've postponed the solar canopy project, which was to have taken place next week. It would have involved the dislocation of a hundred parking spaces at the high school and the tech center. And when I learned that, I decided to postpone it till next summer. It will start the day after students leave and guaranteed to be completed prior to the day students return. There will still be the same dislocation, but it won't interrupt the regular school day. So that triggered my thinking about looking for a long-term facilities plan for the district in terms of needed, deferred maintenance, needed renovations, building, an inventory of equipment, and then a timeline for how the board would pursue that in a very thoughtful, planful way. So we do not have one. So I'd like to ask you to refer to the building committee, a discussion of doing a competitive RFP to hire a consultant, and they do this all the time in many different schools and school districts, to help us plan for the future. And that way, we would know the, the timeline, the chronology of roof replacements, solar, and everything else that I mentioned, I won't repeat it, but deferred maintenance, any building projects, et cetera. So I think you want to get your arms around it as a board and be planful about it. So let's do that together. Okay?
Okay, so referred.
Thank you.
I'll ask the building committee chair to.
I will be pulling together a committee, is meeting, sending out emails to get dates for the next week.
So what you would do is to edit our proposed RFP, and then you would meet to choose from the competitors for the RFP to move forward. And I'm not sure what the cost will be, but my proposal will be to take it out of contingency, because it's forward-thinking and it will help us plan ahead. That's number two. Number three, I wanted to let you know that due to the floor repairs and replacement at the Keith Gym, which was a result of some vandalism at the gym last summer, there will be replacement taking place starting next week of the week, next week, and it will be done at the end of December, beginning of January. We have worked on a, a wonderful collaboration with Mayor Laire and Kim Peters, who's the Recreation Superintendent, and Matt Blumer, who's the city attorney, also my godson, great guy. And we have worked on a partnership, we have a memorandum of understanding, where we're gonna share utility costs to locate our high school boys, high school girls, varsity and JV basketball games at the College of St. Joseph this winter. And they've already started planning the schedules, we'll share it equally. It'll be a fifty-fifty split. We'll make sure that our part of utilities is commensurate with our use of the building going forward, and it's, we're really lucky to have this solution. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate Mayor Laire, Kim Peters, Matt Blumer, and how, how great it's been to collaborate with them. This is a really good solution for our kids and our coaches and the fans. Related to that, in terms of the city and schools getting out of silos and working together, is that I mentioned to you at another meeting that we were gonna start this conversation about bulk buying, volume purchasing between the city and the school department. We had a great meeting last week with Mayor Sarah Magro, who's a purchasing agent for the city, and a number of folks here who were involved in purchasing. We sat in there and we brainstormed all the ways that we could save money going forward, whether it's a fuel bid, the city's already done theirs, but how we can plan on that, office supplies, virtually anything that we buy in bulk, we are going to do together. So we'll measure it, we'll figure out by the end of the year how much we've saved, and we'll do this now going forward, not just this year, but every year. So it's been, it's been a really good partnership. And again, I'm grateful to the city for that. The last thing, the fifth thing, is that the NIASK ten-year accreditation visit at the high school's been taking place. And it's not just a three-day process where they came Sunday, and they'll be giving us their brief overview report tomorrow. It's that this involved year-long, maybe more self-study on the part of the good folks at the high school, and it's involved a lot of work, a lot of self-assessment, reflection on the program there and how we're serving students. They came up with an interesting self-study, which was very reflective. The visiting committee came in, and they're reviewing the standards to making sure we do what we say we do, almost like getting the good schoolkeeping seal of approval. And that's what they do. Next month, in November, Stafford will go through the same process. So tomorrow, at seven forty-five, it was going to be in the afternoon, but they've moved it up. The chair of the visiting committee and some members of the committee will present to the staff at the high school. You're all welcome to come up if you're, come if you're up at seven forty-five, and they'll do kind of an overview. And I just want to thank Bill and your staff, I mean, several of you are here, but on Sunday, it was just so impressive to see the students doing their presentations, and all of you, of course, and the teachers. But it was, it was a great show of collegiality and support. Everybody loves that school. And I just want to thank you for that. I, I went there and just realized that you had corrected all the transgressions of the principal who had been there twenty years ago. So thank you for that. Or twenty-five years ago, I guess he was there. I don't know what happened to that guy. So thank you very much. And, and we'll look forward to the Stafford visit in November, and we'll let you know about that in case you can make it. So thank you to everyone for helping to improve our school. And that's it.
Right. All right, thank you. Yeah, and we, some of us were in attendance for the board interview on, on Sunday with the NIASK, and it's, it's interesting sitting there. Did you, I've always wondered, you know, how long you've been doing this, and you don't want to stay at the fair too long. And I leaned over to Hurley, when's the last time we did this? Because it didn't seem that long ago, he said, it was ten years ago. I said, oh my God, I have stayed at the fair too long. But it's amazing how quickly that time goes by. And they did a great job, and the excitement in that school is just, it's amazing. So, and I do know how much work goes into that self-study, and you guys have shared that with us, and it's just been fantastic. And we certainly look forward with the Stafford visit coming up in November, and look forward to being a part of that as well. So thank you for bringing that up, Dave. That was, that's, that's a very important activity that's going on. All right, moving on then, Maryalma Dunin, our new CFO, and this is her first budget cycle, and we are getting into that time of the year. So she is just going to do an overview of the timeline for the development of the budget. More specifics will be coming up about the actual budget development and projections in subsequent meetings. So wait till this comes around. Thought it was just gonna stall there.
Okay, I just wanted to give you a, a quick idea as to what our, our timeline is gonna be for the budget cycle. It's pretty much what it has been in the past. We've got it started, we're well underway now, and I've been, you know, getting good input from the, from all around the district in terms of getting the process started. So we're here today, providing you with the timeline. At the next meeting on the twelfth, the tech center will give you their first look at their, at their budget, and we'll take a look at the capital maintenance plan, again, to give you, give you a first look. The next, the next meeting on the twenty-sixth is gonna be the, the draft budget for the tech center and the first look at the total district budget, which we'll have for, for you to, you know, take a look at, comment, and, you know, we can take any, any feedback on that at that time. And then in December, you know, you'll be asked to ratify the, the tech, the tech center budget, and it'll give you a revised final version of the district-wide budget. In January, you'll be asked to ratify that district-wide budget. In February, you know, if there's some adjustments, I think that, that might need to be made before the vote in March. We have an opportunity to do that. And then, of course, in March, we'll have it sent out to be voted on by the public. You know, our goal is to, you know, try to come in with a, with a reasonable budget and, you know, keep, keep things under control. So we'll see, we'll see how well we accomplish that in the next, the next few, next few meetings.
I know you can't see us, but. You're over here. Any questions, Maryalma? Now, this is, obviously, this is her first round with the budget as well, and those of us that have been around for a while recognize all the moving pieces. And I would say, as we say every single year, that the door is always open to go in and discuss. And I know many of you do take advantage of that. I don't mean take advantage of it, but in other words, you use that as an opportunity to learn more about the, about the budget as things start progressing. Of course, it is far too early for us to even begin to speculate on tax rates or anything like that. And of course, we don't, we don't make that determination, and that's forthcoming later. But, so anyway, so there, certainly, this is just kind of an outline of the schedule. It doesn't deviate from what we've done before. We always will hold another meeting in abeyance if, if for some reason we need another budget ratification, if we're not satisfied on the fourteenth. I can't remember the actual date that it has to get over to the city clerk's office for the, but it's around the twentieth, twenty-first, or somewhere in there, really, right?
Yes, it is.
So.
I think it's the twenty-second.
Twenty-two, Betty. Okay, so we always hold a meeting in abeyance in the event that, that it's necessary. But this will be your first round, and I know you have a lot of support and will have, and we as well. So any questions for Maryalma? All right?
Thank you, and I look forward to working with you all on it.
Excellent. We do as well. Thanks, Anna. All right, now for the, and great, we're right on time. Oh, yes, yes. Now for the meat of the discussion. We have enough copies for everybody. You want to make sure, too, that we get these to the members that aren't here. Let me explain what we have here.
We're actually fifteen minutes ahead, Dick.
I know. Well, that's my.
It's good.
Good. Yep, it is a good thing. All right, so there's, there's two documents that you have in front of you, and we're gonna review individually separately. They both kind of come out of the retreat. One is specific about the board retreat, the other is information that some of you, and I know, Aaron, you'll recognize this certainly. During the, the retreat that was facilitated by Nicole Mays from the Vermont School Boards Association, we discussed in, to a large extent, sort of our board norms, how we work together, our board operating protocols. And Nicole led us through an exercise where we went through a list, and we picked the ones we like, and then we made some edits and changed things. And Hurley and I were taking copious notes, and I couldn't figure out what I wrote and what I wrote down.
Neither could I, so.
So we got together for coffee the other morning. So what you have in front of you, and actually, the, this had a watermark on it. It was stamped "draft," but I don't think.
That's why it's blurred. There's some spots that's blurred.
Yeah, the PDF probably just didn't, didn't translate well when I, when I sent it over. But in any event, this is meant to be, yeah, you're right, that is. I thought it was just my eyes, but thank you. So what this basically is, is, is a draft, and I say this is a draft because I want to just review it tonight, and then, any questions that you might have, I'd like to get our input and adoption at the next meeting, which is November twelfth, I believe. So I'm gonna review this. So this gets into discussions we've had about how we work together, kind of the rules of engagement for the board. And it's not uncommon for boards to have operating protocols, for everybody who is a part of the board to say, yes, I accept this, I agree to this. Now, understanding that we're all independently elected, and as I said at the retreat, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. So I just want to kind of go over, these are, these are the norms that we talked about, and then if there are any questions, and then what I'd like to do, we really haven't changed anything materially, but like to get this adopted at the next meeting. So, for the purpose of enhancing teamwork among members of the board and between the board and administration, we commit collectively and individually to the following operating protocols. One, the board will represent the needs and interests of all the children in our district. Two, the board will lead by example. While we encourage debate in differing points of view, we will do it with care and respect. Number three, we agree to ask the board chair or the superintendent to place an item on the agenda instead of bringing it up unexpectedly at the meeting unless the issue is emergent and requires immediate attention. Four, the board will encourage others to follow district policies on complaint procedures by presenting concerns, problems, or proposals to the person who can properly and expeditiously address the issue. Five, to be efficient and effective, long board meetings should be avoided. That was my fist pump on that one. If a board member needs more detailed information about an item on the agenda, the board member should contact the chair or superintendent in advance of the meeting. Items brought up during the meeting that are not on the agenda may be tabled until a later date. Number six, the board will consider research, best practice, public input, and financial impacts in its decision-making. Number seven, the board will speak to the issues on the agenda. Facts and information needed from the administration will be referred to the superintendent for follow-up. Eight, the agenda will allow time for focused discussions on board and district goals and outcomes and alignment with strategy and practices. Nine, board members will honor the confidentiality of executive sessions. Ten, the board commits itself to continuous improvement, there's that word again, and goal-setting through semi-annual retreats at minimum. Eleven, the board and superintendent will facilitate goal-setting for the district. Twelve, board members will come prepared to meetings. Thirteen, individual, individual board members do not have authority. Only the board in total has authority. The board chair or his or her designee will be the board spokesperson. Fourteen, when board members serve on various non-board committees or attend such committee meetings, the board member's role is that of a liaison to the board, and when addressing the committee, shall be as an individual. And, excuse me, fifteen, and final, the board will establish the vision, create policies, and ensure accountability. The superintendent shall manage the schools. So these are the operating protocols that we agreed upon. There was a little bit of wordsmithing, there were a few of them, and I didn't bring the original note, I, I do have it back in my office, but that we had decided we weren't gonna put in there. There was either too much debate or just didn't seem like we, we needed them. So those are not included, but those were universally like, no, let's ditch those. So is there anything that just seems out of place to you? Everyone was at the retreat, which was fantastic. So everybody had an opportunity to be part of that. Yes, do you want?
I don't know if it belongs here. I, I do have a concern with email or non-warned board meetings. And I don't know if it's something that goes on here, or if it's a policy, or if there could be something about that, you know, we follow the laws. Because I, I just am very uncomfortable. Sometimes people will send out, you know, a missive about what they think, and then, of course, it's, that's an actual meeting if it's sent to everybody, and we can't have those. Those are, right, we have to warn our meetings for the public. So I, I'm not sure if it belongs in here, but it's something that has concerned me. And it doesn't happen very often, because most of the time someone responds and says, this is an unward board meeting, and then people stop.
Usually it's you.
Yes, it is. But I, and it's, people don't do it often.
No.
But it just is of concern to me. I'm not sure if it's addressed in here, or, I mean, you know, a sixteenth when there's fifteen, or if we could slide it in there that we actually follow the law. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, whether or not something that, because that really is, that's part of Vermont Open Meeting Law.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, maybe this open, transparent, broader.
Put some consideration behind that. And if you could perhaps suggest something, maybe, between now and then.
Something about transparency or something.
Well, I think, I mean, really, would it, yeah, Allison and then Matt.
So I think it might be helpful. I don't know that it doesn't belong in here. I don't think it needs to belong in here because it is la law. But I think going forward, as some of the topics that we should look into for board development, definitely open meeting law should be one of them. And I would think that that might curtail, help with some of the understanding and curtail the behaviors.
Matt?
Is there any kind of guide out there as to what is appropriate to share in an email ahead of time? I think what I find sometimes when I read the emails is that someone wants to give people a heads up, "I plan to bring this up so that we can discuss it at the next meeting. I want you to know about it ahead of time so that you know that I'm going to bring it up and can think ahead," which to me is different than having a discussion. And I think the discussion happens when people reply to those emails. And I'm not actually really sure what's appropriate to share an email and I wouldn't mind if there's some kind of resource that we can review.
There is. There is. Actually, VSB and Agency of Education have a, in fact, I've seen it and it's a primer on, basically, what is discouraged or what is in violation of Vermont Open Meeting Law is when a public body in total begins debate through electronic means, when it is not actually engaged in a meeting. I think one of the things that we're talking about is, because we have had situations, and Joanne is absolutely correct, in particular earlier this year, when, you know, an email would go out to the entire board. I think the intention was to do as you said, which is, "Look, I'm thinking about this, whatever." And then what ended up happening is people would start debating. When that happens, that crosses a line. That becomes a public meeting that is not have accountability or the transparency that the Vermont Open Meeting, Open Meeting Law is intended to have. But we can get clarification at the next meeting. Allison, Dave, yeah?
So my concern also is not only the debate. Once someone sends something to the full board, that is a public document. That becomes part of the board's record.
That is correct.
So when there might be some sensitive information in there, some personnel information, some, anything that puts a board at a disadvantage, whether or not you want to say that's violating the open meeting law, that is a discoverable record for the board.
That is correct. That is correct. Dave?
So I'd be glad to put together for the board the legal analysis and send it out. And that would include the interpretation from Secretary of State's office as well as AOE. And, you know, the devil's in the details. So I sent you all an update on HR that I'd sent out to the whole school district last week. I just thought, since you're not on that list, I would send it to you. But then you need to look at what those communications are. And that was just an FYI. So it didn't constitute a meeting. It just constituted letting you know what's going on. So I think it would be helpful to have the analysis from the state and then you can.
That'd be helpful. That'd be great. And then I think that would suffice in terms of, yeah, Joanne?
Yeah, because otherwise you're also then a hostage to somebody just sending out their opinion every day on something. And that's awful, too. And so I just, I just think, you know, it's one thing to say, "I'd like something on the agenda," but you don't have to justify it. Just say, "I'm going to put, I want this on the agenda." And then that's not an invitation to discuss or the creation of a record. But I appreciate, Dave, that you'll do this for us. And I think maybe something about transparency, and I'll try to come up with something or incorporate it into something else because 15 is better than 16. Seven would be better than.
Okay. All right. Good. Matt?
Does this document replace this other piece, which is a code of conduct that exists from?
What other piece?
Well, I have a Board of School Commissioners Code of Conduct that was approved November 2nd, 2005.
Oh, the policy.
It's a policy.
Yeah, I don't know if this has any relation to.
It does, it, well, it doesn't. I forgot that even existed. We'll have to look at that. It would probably, so whatever we decide would supplant.
Should you, do you want this copy or?
Yeah.
Look at it with, whoever's going to be looking at the draft or?
Yeah, you can pass it over. We haven't, what's that? No, I don't think we need to make copies of it. I mean, the question will come whether, is that, is that a policy?
I think so.
Is it the board?
I didn't think it was a policy.
It's not a policy.
No, it's not?
It's just a code of conduct.
No, it's code of conduct.
Yeah.
And it's very wordy. Yeah, I don't recall seeing this before my time. So I think what we'll look at doing is taking, but I think this document really is probably the better of the two.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanted to see if there's anything in there that's important that might go with this or.
Yeah, some of this was lifted, I think, from the old Department of Education, so.
There is a code of conduct policy.
There's a code of conduct policy, right, but this is specific to board operating protocols. Yeah.
Which is separate from.
Yeah, separate. Take a look at that, but likelihood is the board operating, we can just all kind of agree on that. But again, we're all independent and, you know, that's, that changes things. So we'll do that on November 12th. All right, the next piece has to do with a tremendous amount of work that we did three years ago, three, four years ago, that determined to get back on track with, for the Performance Excellence Initiative. Because I think we, we made some efforts to, there was a substantial amount of community involvement, input, faculty, students, in the development of the broad goals for the district, the board goals. And I think we struggled to really put that into play as, for example, the schools are doing with their Plan Do Study Act, Continuous Improvement Cycle. So if you recall, for those of you that were part of this process, and it was very extensive, and many of you that are, that are in the, in the audience as administrators participated in this process. But what we looked at were certainly the vision statement for the district, the mission, that all came out of this work. But we developed board-level goals and those were extracted from the mission and the vision and the performance and purpose. And if you remember, we went through what the intent of the goal was, what I asked the principals earlier, the key quality characteristics. In other words, what does good look like? If you tripped over it, what is it? What is the evidence of that intent result? And then the measurement concepts, which is how can we quantify that? And we understand that there's both quantitative and qualitative measurements. And then we did a whole process scoring. I think we were up at the hospital at the Lakey Center, if I'm not mistaken. And we spent a number of hours really working this plan. It was facilitated by Kathy Latender, Latender and Associates. So I just want to review here because what I'm going to, what we're asking the superintendent, and Dave and I have talked about this and Hurley and I, we would really like to, in particular with new leadership in central office and Dave and Rob and others, to help us really put this together. I get concerned that if, the board really shouldn't be the ones putting all of these pieces together. This is, this is board work, but it's community work. But this is really something that we're going to need the professionals to help us connect and finally actually do it in a way that's meaningful, which is why I asked Lauren, Suzanne, and Andy about if you could slip a piece of paper under the door to let us know how you're doing. That's the key quality characteristic. What does good look like? So these were the different board-level goals. And I just have you reference this document. We're going to be talking about it again. And I'm going to ask probably in the next couple of meetings, once we've had a chance to chat a little bit more with Dave and Rob about this, about how to really reengage. Because we've done reports. Rob's brought a lot of good stuff to the board for reports. And it's really, I think it's time for us to revisit. So the board-level goals, to just go over them very, very quickly. And if you remember correctly, there was a great deal of discernment that went into each and every word. We empower students to be accomplished individuals and community members. Students will be productive members of the school and community. That's a goal. So there would be key quality characteristics. We talked about what the intent was. We will deliver a comprehensive and engaging curriculum for a diverse student body. Again, we went through all of the different intents, key quality concepts, measurement concepts, but there's just a lot here that I think we're going to need to just really distill down into the, what are called the vital few. We will provide a safe and healthy environment that fosters mutual respect. We will address the social and emotional needs of all students. Students will take responsibility for their education. Students will develop their intellectual, creative, social, emotional, and physical abilities. And then we had different characteristics by allocating resources responsibly, community engagement, cultivating a community of diverse thinkers, of critical thinkers, excuse me, cultivating a culture of passionate, diverse, and resilient learners. There was learning with a purpose, apply learning to creating innovative and responsible solutions. And then school community will lead lives of integrity while in the school and in their lives. So there's about five big goals. The rest of them were parts that led into that. So we've done that work. We don't need to go back to that unless there's a real compelling reason, and I can't see one. They seem as relevant today as they did in three, four years ago. I think it was four, it was when Peter Mello was board chair and I worked with him on the development of this. So we're going to have more discussions about this. But one of the things that, as we restructure these meetings, and I really feel we need to transform these meetings into meaningful meetings, into meetings where we can really talk. When we get together at the retreats, we have a real opportunity to engage in conversation, engage in discussion, which I find very valuable. What I want to get away from, and I know we have certain things we have to do, but we need to really spend as much meaningful time together at the board level, hearing the things we need to hear, talking about the things we need to talk about, really having a better assessment of, you know, how we're doing. Because at the end of the day, the Board of School Commissioners has that responsibility and we have very skilled professionals that are employed to carry that out. So I know that, you know, we struggle sometimes with meetings and there's certain things we have to hear and we've all said we'd like to be doing things a little bit differently. And it might even be the timing of the meetings. I don't know. But I do want us to spend some real time on this and have much more meaningful meetings with us. So that's my two cents, more than that, but it's kind of where I think we need to be headed as a board. Any questions or, no? All right. So, yeah, Matt?
Well, I did. I wanted to point out how the presentation tonight from Suzanne, Lauren, and Andrew, the things that they're doing in their schools and leading are speaking to these items in the mission. I think the things are happening. I think it's just making it more clear that this is why we're doing it and how it serves the mission. But I saw they're trying, you know, they're taking action to deliver a comprehensive and engaging curriculum. They're working to provide safe and healthy environments, support the social, emotional needs of students. I think the things are happening. It's just keeping, when we learn about what's happening in schools, keeping it focused on why it's happening.
And the alignment.
And that's an intention. Yeah, it's definitely happening.
Absolutely. Exactly. Good. All right. Observation. All right. So we will, more to come on that again. All right. Is there any new business coming forward to the board? Just want to point out, and it's not really new business, but our next board meeting, which is November 12th, will be at the Grove Street campus and not here. So that's where that meeting will be.
We have reminders.
Yeah, we'll make sure we have a reminder because I think the default's always coming here. Is there any old business? All right, hearing none. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.